To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to start just a little bit different. I'd like to take a moment of silence in honor of Jerry Hughes, longtime resident football coach for like 28 years, taught at Goodrich for over 34 years, and he passed away last week. So if we could have a moment of silence, please. All right, thank you. I think everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda.
May I approach the agenda as soon?
A second.
All right. There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Everyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will accept. Approval, there are amendments to regular meeting October 11, 2021.
I make a motion to approve a amendment to regular MTG, October 11, 2021.
Motion and support?
Support.
Motion and support to approve minutes, October 11, 2021. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Number five, motion to receive treasures report as presented, October 21.
That's what we got, right?
Oh, that's what we created that.
Yeah, that's the number three.
Yeah, it was separate. Any questions? Second motion to approve is presented.
I make a motion to authorize payment of bills which is...
No, 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 not bills.
Oh, sorry.
Treasures. Treasure report.
Treasures, sorry. Motion to receive treasures report as presented, October 2021.
Support.
There's a motion and support to approve the treasures report, October 2021. Tracy, roll call.
Moore?
Yes.
Shimotaro?
Yes.
McAvie?
Yes.
Walworth?
Yes.
Schluntz?
Yes.
Motion to carry. Motion to authorize payment of bills and transfers as presented, October 21.
I make a motion to authorize payments of bills and transfers and present, October 21.
You have an outside of that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to authorize payment of bills and transfers as presented, October 21. Tracy, please.
Schluntz?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Shimotaro?
Yes.
McAvie?
Yes.
Walworth?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to public comments on the items only. Anybody who would like to speak? Yes.
I would like, Doreen Hackness, I would like to speak to item F under new business. I'm glad to see this on here. It seems like it would be a good use of stimulus funds for dam repair and reconstruction. So I'm hoping that you approve that and go forward with that. That's it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Reports. Eight A, administrator.
At the last meeting, council authorized me to submit a grant application for N.D. Small Urban Program road project for Pontiac Street and Huffstetter Street. I was informed that Huffstetter Street does not meet the qualifications any longer, so I had to scrap that. However, Pontiac did, and it started out that the county, Jemessy County Road Commission was there, they wanted the whole $385,000 that was being offered for them to do...
Green road.
Green road, yeah, green road it was. And they were getting ready to do it, and they said, "Does anybody have a motion?" And I said, "Well, yeah, I have a motion." I said, "The village of Goodrich would like $40,000." I said, "But the county have $345,000." And then the gentleman said, who was there for the road commission, said, "Well, I'll have to check with the powers that be to see if that's okay." So he texted somebody, he come back, he said that would be acceptable. So we got the 40 for Pontiac, and they got the 345,000 for Green.
Did they say why Huffstetter doesn't cooperate yet?
I think it's because it had, it was a, it used to be a hospital, a public hospital, and that was what that was for to begin work, and now it is not.
That's where the road ended.
Yes, right, right at the hospital. So I tried, but I couldn't get it.
Thank you for doing a good job.
I'm currently working on ordinances for soil erosion and flooding, and our current ordinances briefly touch upon both of these subjects. I'm gathering research from like communities to see what they have in place. Also, our code enforcement officers provide me with a page of bullet points regarding unlicensed motor vehicles and junk vehicles that I'm working on to create a junkyard and unlicensed impoundable motor vehicle ordinance. And I'm also gathering information from like municipalities regarding dangerous animals, weapons, and hunting, and home business licensing. A lot of these, a lot of our ordinances, I've noticed, have not literally been touched since they were created back in 1957. They, some of them refer to absolutely no hunting, only in the park. Some refer to...
The little kids.
Weapons, no weapons to be discharged unless you're the police chief or one of our police officers. Well, we don't have a police chief or police officers anymore. It just, a lot of it just needs to be cleaned up and redone. I'm literally going through each one.
Do we, do you mean we need to do that?
We do have something, and they're going through it too. But this is going to take a very long time, hence the one thing that I have on the agenda tonight, for MUNICODE to go through and help point these things out for me, because our ordinances, state law supersedes local law. And we got to make sure that we're in sync with them on all of our ordinances, and I know right now we're not on some of them. So this is, this is quite the process. So I am working on these things, and if anybody else has anything they want to help, you know, gather with, bring it to me. We did close the loan with Choice One Bank to take over the 2003 USDA loan on October 25, 2021. The debt the village of Goodrich owed to the United States of America has been completely paid in full, and I gave you a copy of that. That was great to see. By refinancing this loan, this council, this council saved, changed off two years off the original loan and is saving the village of Goodrich residents over $250,000 over the life of this new loan. So good job, everybody.
Thank you, Sheri.
Yep. And one more thing I got, the Lions Club food drive collection. We have some baskets here up front, they have them at the township. Will end Wednesday, December 15. So if you guys have any food items you'd like to drop off for the food drive.
Do you know what it's for?
It's for the Jemessy County Food Bank.
Oh, the Jemessy County, okay.
Yep.
You're saying December 15?
December 15 will be, yeah.
It's for the baskets. The Lions Club puts together baskets every year.
For families?
Each family.
Okay.
Is there anything specific they ask for, or is that...
Not perishable.
It's just non-perishable food?
Uh huh. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Street administrator?
Yes. Here are some activities we are working on. Removing dirt from under guard rails east Heagle Road and Dirt Road. We are starting to make our final round of cold patching before snow comes. Tree trimming road right of way only if weather permits. We're saving prices on radar speed signs, possibly Heagle and Ridge Road. Removing leaves from covers of catch basins. We'll be getting trucks ready for winter in the next couple of weeks. We ordered 3 tons of, 300 tons of salt for the winter season. Last activity in the park due to cameras. Kids are keeping it clean. Have a great day, Matt.
Matt did provide us with some more information on the lights to put on, the speed signs, the issues we're having at Ridge and Heagle. Was it Ridge and Heagle?
January.
January. Ridge and January. And what I, the new ones, I don't know if you guys have seen them, there's another one now that has the lights that go all the way around the stop signs.
Have you seen those?
Yes.
Flash.
Price wise, they're about the same, about $1,400, $1,400 to $1,500. I would, I would like to bring this to council at the next meeting in December to perhaps do at least two stop signs on Ridge. Those seem to be the ones that we get the most complaints about and the ones that most people are flying through and not stopping. So I'm looking, I'm going to ask council to make a determination which one you want to buy or use, but I'm going to ask for you guys to make a decision on that at the next meeting in December.
Is this speed one with the radar a possibility for Heagle?
Sure, I mean, of course, yes. We, we got some prices for these things with the speed, with the previous council. But it never, I mean...
I mean, it'd be great, but it just says the price to go through November 31, so maybe I'll extend that one.
Yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, we'll be good.
I mean, I think those are the most effective, personally. It shows your speed, you know, you see a flash and sign, it doesn't quite connect with you.
Well, and Heagle...
But then when you see your, you know, your speed, then you're like, oh, okay.
Because Heagle's not, you know, there's not a stop. I understand the flashy one on...
Well, I'm not, they're wanting the speed or the stop sign to be noticed, because people are blowing through it.
I'm asking about the one for Heagle that was...
An additional for this, of course, yes. We can always look at that too. I could get, I even have more prices on these that I have accumulated.
I mean, coming into town is where the biggest issue is.
Yeah, I'll get that information for you too.
Awesome.
But right now, what I'm going to be working on is those two stop signs.
No, but yeah, it's...
But yes, I will get that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next code enforcement? Can I take a little?
I just have a, Sheri, just if you would mention to the code enforcement officers, I would like more of a description on these violations instead of...
More detail?
You know, a couple words.
Okay.
I'd like to know what's, you know, really what's going on. I mean, you know, I see one and the violation says lighting.
Okay.
Okay, well, what does that mean? What's the issue? Tell me, tell me what the issue is in a sentence.
Of course.
Okay. Building Department?
Just a guy busy, man.
Yeah, that's my activity. Go down to the hill from somewhere.
Questions? I have a question, Tracy, maybe you can answer the question. Do you know what's going on with Green Ridge Estates? I'm just curious why there hasn't been any activity as far as them starting that project.
That would be more for, for planning and zoning.
Well, I'll find out.
Okay. We're not holding up, right?
No, no.
I have a question. Building permits, that doesn't have to do with just business, it's just straight construction, building permits?
Correct. It's roof, decks, pools, houses, commercial remodel, everything.
I was excited to see the new sandwich shop open.
Okay. Cash receipts? October 21, 2021. Sheri, is there anything you'd like to highlight on this report?
No.
Okay. Too straightforward?
Tracy, I have a question for you. On some of these, where the taxes, under the taxes, you know, every now and again you see refund, what does, what does that mean?
Because somebody had paid the taxes already, and the check comes in with a big amount with a variety of people on there. It's a mortgage check, is what I'm trying to say. And what had happened was the person that did the taxes mailed out all of them.
Oh, it's that situation, oh, okay.
Yeah, and so some people paid their taxes, and then the mortgage company paid them as well.
Gotcha.
So we had to send the refunds back.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? For a motion?
I'm making a motion too.
No motion. It'll be a motion.
We don't have...
No. No, these are just reports, no.
All right. Fire department. 12 runs. Everybody always looks at their neighborhood to see what's... Unfortunately, my neighborhood across the street, the siren stops, it's not a good sign. Okay, Sheriff Department report, October 2021. Again, I think I pointed this out last, last time, this is about 15 pages. The last page is about half a page, and it seems to me there's a summary on the very back that says, police calls 142 for all of Atlas Township. It's not broken down village and township. And mileage, 4,413 miles. There's all kinds of accidents, felony arrests, medical, medical assistance. Actually, I've got more detail than Timmy usually gives, good. Okay. New business.
Well, I'm the police information, there's, all addresses are cut off.
Yeah, just printed bigger.
Yeah, 25 traffic warnings and 34 car stops.
Yeah, well, I might want to see in the future if you can do something, flip that around so it fits the page better or whatever. I don't know, if the way they...
I didn't even notice about paying attention.
It's usually smaller, so you can...
I assume this is the way that you receive it, because it's a lot to, be a lot to handle. That's a good point. Okay, 9A, adopt sanitary sewer collection system permit as required. What is DEGLE?
It's the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy. They are requiring all local communities to adopt this collection system permit program, which requires the development of an operation and maintenance plan, asset management plan, and reporting requirements and other aspects of owning and maintaining a sanitary sewer collection system, and it'll be effective April 1, 2022. We own this sewer system up there, so we have to do this, we have to adopt this. And this is where that SAW grant comes in, where we do the reporting with the SAW grant, okay, with our sewer lines and stuff, this will help do these reports. So this is housekeeping, we need to adopt this.
Right.
Okay.
It's 28 pages long. And we do need to adopt this to make sure we're compliant and...
Yes, please. Well, I would like to make a motion to adopt sanitary sewer collection system permit as required by...
DEGLE.
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 I wrote a motion down. Oh, okay, great, like...
All right, it's your support?
Support.
Okay, there's a motion of support to adopt sanitary sewer collection system permit as required. Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is adopted. Okay, B is authorize MUNICODE to perform legal review of our code, providing a snapshot of possible conflicts and consensual within the code.
This is a quote from MUNICODE to provide a legal review of our code of ordinance, as I discussed this earlier in my report, where one of their legal attorneys will review our codes to eliminate internal conflicts and inconsistencies and ensure conformity with state law. They will provide recommendations to resolve any of our issues or concerns, and the cost is $5,540.
What is the payment for legal review?
I'm sorry?
Then there's a payment for legal review, it says upon execution of agreement, 2775.
That's, you can pay half of it, but they divided it into two, from what I understood.
Yeah, so there's the upon execution and upon delivery.
Yeah, it's a 50/50.
Oh, I see. Now, we discussed this a little bit earlier, and I think one thing to remember about this is that they would stand behind court cases with advice and evidence. I assume they won't present, our attorneys would have to do that, but they've had practically every legal situation arise, and if we have a case that would come up, we would be able, even though we have it on our books, we'd be able to get legal advice that maybe our attorney and their attorney can get together, and we'll get more legal advice without having to pay an attorney to assist. Did I say that right?
Okay, so the last time you brought this to our attention, I asked you to ask them a few questions in regards to this, because our ordinances are sitting on MUNICODE right now, so when you go to the website and you go to our ordinances, it's going to MUNICODE.
It's their program to allow other people to...
Right.
Find our ordinances and research and buy them.
One of the questions I had was, did we go through a code review...
No.
...of our ordinances when we originally stuck them out?
No, we did not.
In MUNICODE?
No, we did not. All that program is doing is to put our ordinances online. That's what that program did.
Okay, and so what is it that they're going to really be giving us? I mean, they're going to do a review and see if there's conflicts between some of our ordinances? Are they going to request or advise us in regards to ordinances that we don't have on our books?
Only what we have right now.
So they're not going to, so the scope is just whatever we have to make sure that there's no conflicts?
What we have right now.
Correct.
Now, it's either, we can either have them do this right now, or we can do it one at a time, like I'm also on this agenda tonight. I have created one new ordinance for food vendor vehicles, which I'm asking, going to ask council to allow me to give to our attorney for his review and recommendation. So we can do this one at a time, like I'm saying, like I'm doing it, one at a time. It's going to take us many years.
So if we have a weak, a weak ordinance, this open-ended, that really should be tightened up?
They're going to tell us that. They're going to tell us.
They will tell us?
Yes. Or if it's a direct counter with the state, yes.
Just for, how many ordinances do we have?
There's a lot.
I mean, I'm saying like 300, 3,000? They're going to go through all of them.
I think it's well worth it if you take a look at it. It's a mess.
Well, I mean, what have we identified as far as, because you guys have been doing some review of the ordinances, so what have we identified as far as...
The ones that I had just discussed that I'm working on right now are the ones that... To the front right now. But as I go through, like somebody called...
Yeah, those are new ones. Those are new ordinances, those aren't existing.
No, they are existing ordinances, but they only touch on something with a word or two. Like hunting, it says, they're literally for hunting. A person come in and want, and they'll say, "Good hunting." And I say, "No, you can't." Well, show me where in our ordinance where you can. Where I go, I look it up, try to find it, look up, all I can find is one word about hunting, one little line that says, "There will be no hunting with firearms, bow and arrow, or traps in the park. In the park." Only hunting in the park. Park. Doesn't say the bill, it just says, "In the park." So, if somebody really, I mean, it's not good. These things are, these things are good, they need to be fixed.
I guess, I'm kind of thinking I can keep here, so how are they going to know that that's unacceptable for us? I mean, are they...
That part they aren't, because this is where our little subcommittee comes in, and myself going through them, I'm finding these things that it isn't, it isn't good. Like it refers to our police chief.
Right, and I know, I'm saying, for the $5,000 from MUNICODE, how are they going to know what we're trying to adjust? I mean, like, how do they know that that's not, that that's not current? They might think that you can only hunt in our park. So is that, I'm just making, is it worth the funds if they're, how much can they really divulge into our stuff, or is it just abroad across the spectrum?
Well, all the law... It shows male, it shows male, doesn't show any female. I just, all the wording is so outdated and the law... Law requires, the law requires codification of your, of municipalities' ordinances every 10 years. It's a requirement by law, because your ordinances are your community's laws, okay? It's your laws that you've adopted. You have to clean them up and publish them in their entirety every 10 years. You can either do that, and believe me, that's expensive, or you can do a legal review, which you're doing right here. And that would take the place of that codification of every 10 years that's recorded by law. I honestly don't know when you guys last did them. I'm going to have to do that research, I don't know when it was, or if it's ever been.
I don't know.
Because if we go to court, they could go, you know, if we went to court with an issue or something, they could throw it right out of the court, because our ordinance aren't up to date.
So what happens, when they go through this and they identify different ordinances that are in conflict, or they give us some updated wording for some of these ordinances, then we have to go through and adopt all these changes?
Yes, we're going to have to adopt those amendments, yes, yes, yes.
This is all included in that fee, adoption, the read, everything.
No, I would create that. You guys do the adoptions. No, we have to have a public hearing and all that stuff for, like a new ordinance, like an ordinance. Any amendment to an ordinance has to have a public hearing. Because it's the law. Well, I would like to make a motion for MUNICODE to perform a legal review of our code for providing a snapshot of possible conflicts and inconsistencies with the code, within the code.
Your support? Really wants one second?
Support.
Any other comments?
I'm for it, I was interested to know, like I said, for the, you know, the sake of the media and public, how many ordinances do we have? And if you said they're outdated, then I'll be on the council that fixes this.
Okay. Tracy, would you please?
Moore?
Yes.
McAvie?
Yes.
Schluntz?
Yes.
Walworth?
No.
Shimotaro?
Yes.
Motion approved? Okay. Request to close Eagle after turnaround near Village Commons Park entrance Clarence. Not obstructing Clarence Street or downtown Christmas, for downtown Christmas, December ninth, twenty twenty-one, five P M to eight P M.
I'd like to make a motion to request to close Eagle after the...
Jenny's here to speak on it. I'm sorry, girl.
What is just, so our plan is, if you look at the picture behind you, from the light post there, in front of the red car, just down the other side, so none of the, none of the the T intersection will be blocked, from there. Down to the end of the flats, the gardens on the, on the other side. So, we have made application to the Genesee County Sheriff's Reserve guys to come up and, you know, look attractive and all that kind of stuff. But we will need some, the barricades and stuff that we steal for for Good Times in Goodrich. Plan is to have Santa downtown, light the Christmas tree, have a couple of church choirs, some vendors, that kind of stuff. Might go a little bit past date. Nine might be a better. Thought just as a
For cleanup?
Just for cleanup and all that kind of stuff. Last year, Jeff Valley was very kind and lent us some patio heaters and that kind of stuff, and we put them in the middle of the road, and that seemed to be a nice thing for people to, you know, wander, keep wandering around and standing on the patio. So that's our plan, if it's okay with, with council to do that. We'd really, we'd really appreciate it, it's a free event for anybody who wants to turn up and wander around and visit with Santa and look at the lights. Time, the Chamber of Commons did it for a long time, they ran out of funds, so.
Okay, so you guys, okay.
So we took it over because, because they didn't have any money, so.
And nobody that had issues with the recent event, has any issues with that?
Would you, like, the festival?
The food trucks?
Yeah, they had the issues with the food trucks, they had any issues with this?
No, we won't be having food trucks, I think.
I'm saying in general that the business...
Oh, no, 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 because we don't, we don't block any of the streets, and we're very cognizant of, I've talked to Steve Boland and that kind of stuff, so we're
We don't block any actual fire department?
But we can get in and out, so.
We don't do any food trucks?
We don't do any food trucks, so.
Just in downtown, in Good Times in Goodrich.
Exactly, so.
Right, I understand, because remember we got the report that they were upset about taking this?
Oh, yeah, but, no, no, no.
There's a different group.
It's a different group, it's not us, yes, yes.
On the same vein, could we request, could you look into some pricing for some actual road blockage for us? If it's a reasonable price, we're offering to pay for it, if we can just store it here. What we're finding with Good Times in Goodrich, and it's done on Christmas, is the pylons aren't enough. People drive through them and around them. And we can put bodies there, and they drive through us and around us. So if we put the actual barricades and say, even the two-by-four with the horses, red and whites, orange and white stripes, and the road closed, and it's a reasonable price, we'll pay for them.
And then you can use them for whatever.
We can use as many as you want, we have no issue with that. Yeah, just for safety purposes. We've had one person get run over.
But look, he's still talking. They can do a little bit of job. So, yeah, so that's all we're looking for you.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to make a motion to request to close Eagle after the turn, oh, no, okay. I was reading the right one, right?
Yep.
Okay, request to close Eagle after the turnaround area near Village Commons Park entrance down to clear to Clarence, not to obstructing Clarence Street for downtown Christmas, December ninth, twenty twenty-one, from five P M to
Nine.
eight to nine-ish?
Nine.
Now, let's make it nine, yeah.
Support. Okay, motion in support, any questions? Think we do roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who's opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. B, confirmation of prior authorization given by council for emergency brake repairs to DPW twenty, two thousand five GMC truck.
The truck's brakes, three of the five brakes on the truck busted, and this was an emergency, and I had to pull everyone except you, Wendy, you were on vacation, honey, so I didn't call about you. But I did call all these people, and I got prior approval, because this was an emergency situation, to get this truck fixed. And what this is, again, is housekeeping, we have to put it on here for formal approval, and the bill is there, as you can see, and it's for four thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents.
I'll make a motion to confirm prior authorization given by council for emergency brake repairs to the DPW two thousand five GMC truck in the amount of forty-nine twenty-three ninety-nine.
Support.
Okay, there's motion in support. And I will read that again, but confirm prior authorization given by the council. Tracy?
Shimataro?
Yes.
Walworth?
Yes.
Schluntz?
Yes.
McAbey?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, E, authorize submission to village attorney to review proposed ordinance to permit and regulate mobile food vehicle vendors within the village of Goodrich.
Due to the many, well, complaints, from what I understand, from the business owners here in the village, they did not come to me, they went to the supervisor at Atlas Township. And the supervisor at Atlas Township told me about the business owners who did not like the food trucks out there. So, in looking, I noticed we do not have anything controlling vendor food trucks. So I did some research, and I, from my village list serve, and I got some information from different villages, like villages, and I created a proposed ordinance to provide for a permit, regulate mobile food vending vehicle vendors within the village of Goodrich. What I'm asking now is for your authorization for me to submit this to our village attorney for his review and recommendation before I bring it back to council for consideration of adopting.
Just for the audience's knowledge, can you just give a summary of that?
Some what?
A summary of it? So, we're talking about down in the park area?
Yeah, down in the park area, well, actually, in order to go on, like, some people hire them privately and go out on the street, different streets, even when we have them here for breakfast. It can be allowed, but they, it's so many feet from the door of
How would it, I'm not supposed to speak, but anyway. How would that affect our festival?
It wouldn't. It would.
Well, if you're doing it for trucks, I'm just asking. We do have food trucks during...
We, it, the ordinance itself, if adapted, you'll be able to read it, there'll be a public hearing, all this stuff, you'll be able to give us input on it. But yes, it will determine where they can go, where they can park, how far away, but, and for how many hours. It's quite general, I think, I don't think you have any issues with it.
Okay.
Um, thank you. But yeah, it's, this isn't, it still has to go, the council's gotta go here, we have to have two here, you know, two hearings.
We love to panic, you know?
Yeah, I go, I'd be happy to share with what I have, but it's nothing yet, nothing yet.
August comes up quick.
I'm still counsel. And if nothing, if counsel here doesn't prove me to send it, I mean, it could die right here, right now.
Well, I'll make a motion to authorize a submission to the village attorney to review a proposed ordinance to permit and regulate mobile food vehicle vendors within the village of Goodrich.
Not support.
All right. Motion in support, all over. Any comments, questions?
I just have a comment on the more than five active mobile food truck coming does the content of dinner typically have? I mean, I know that they wouldn't be within forty feet of the front door of an establishment, but
Are you talking about in the park?
Yeah.
We have probably seven or eight at most.
So I just don't know if that would conflict the more than five?
But see, again, they still would have to come to council for approval. So when they come to council for approval for everything, they would say, "We have these trucks," you guys would be approving that, at that point. It's still your decision.
Can you designate the location of?
Yeah, we've talked about this at the last meeting. Yes, yes.
Same, the line says right there, no more than five, I just wanna make sure that.
And please take, can please take in consideration too, and when we do the festival, we go to the local businesses and ask for their support, some do monetary, so they do know our plans, and we do tell them there's trucks and things like that, because they realize the good of the overall event that we're giving back to the community.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
We have a motion.
Yes, we have a motion and support. Tracy, please.
Walworth?
Yes.
Schluntz?
Yes.
McAbey?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Shimataro?
Yes.
Motion is adopted. And that is, that will be a longer process. It's not just a few votes and it's over. Okay. F, authorize?
This is, this is exciting, F is exciting.
Yeah.
I'm requesting authorization to work with Kevin Cook from Waitrim to look into a summary of pending, proposed, I underlined that and I highlighted this, legislation on how current stimulus funds may be appropriated, including two new ones, Keith, proposed programs related to dam repair and reconstruction, which I was really excited about. Also has to do with flooding, windy. It has, there's different, different things here that's hitting on our, some of our concerns. And there's billions of dollars at stake that we might be able to get in on. So, what I would, I need is your permission to allow Kevin and myself to follow through on this, and if there's anything that comes up, if they come through and they say, "Yes, this, we can use this for this, for this," I'll be bringing it right to you guys for approval, for me to apply for any grant monies that are available. And that's what this is, so.
So, has has this been approved? Because, you know, I'm looking in the initial letter, and it just said that a package of infrastructure bills withdrawn by person political and business sector support will be considered in the Michigan Senate next week. Michigan Senate Bill five sixty-five, which proposes two point five billion dollars of state American Rescue Plan Act funding for water and other infrastructure projects will be considered by the Senate Committee on appropriations next Wednesday. So, I see this letter was dated, or this email was dated then the twenty-fifth, so I'm taking it, this bill passed? Okay. And this is not, this is separate from what just passed?
What just passed?
So there could be more
There could be more, yes.
kind of down the road.
Yes.
So if we're gonna do something, it's like, probably won't get these kind of opportunities in the future.
This is exciting.
Well, I would love to make an authorized administrative, administrator in Waitrim to look into a summary of pending legislation and how to create stimulus funds may be appreciated, appropriated, including two new programs related to dam repair and reconstruction.
And the motion is in support?
I'll support that.
Motion and support, comment? Okay. Tracy, if you would, please?
Schluntz?
Yes.
McAbey?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Shimataro?
Yes.
Walworth?
Yes.
Because that's most closed session members, I think.
Oh, that's good.
Should just move public comment up.
Yeah. What's suggested?
Because we have a closed session, we're going to go to number ten, public comments. I'm items on the agenda. Doug's gonna take that over. Again, we're gonna have to go to closed session, we're gonna have to ask
Comments?
I do. I was curious, I haven't been to the meetings, but I was wondering if there's anything new on the master plan, for one. The next thing is the newsletter. I'm wondering, is that a go, is that a no-go? Last I heard, it was gonna be on the website. Unless I'm not seeing it, I just wondered about that. The other thing is, I thought at a meeting a few months back, you guys approved a new website? Do you know when that's gonna happen? It looks the same to me.
Oh, it's being worked on right now.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Okay, because...
I decided, I just saw the
Okay.
preliminary front page, it's so nice.
Because I've noticed, like, I was looking for some minutes and agendas, and there's, for twenty twenty-one, there's three months of minutes missing currently, and four months of agendas missing. So I was just wondering about that. And lastly, Zoom meetings, I brought it up before. Said a great idea, yeah, we'll have to look into that, I wondered where that's going, because Atlas Township has their in-person and the Zoom. And I, personally, for me, it would be a lot easier at different months to just attend a Zoom than to come in, so.
I don't have the equipment, first of all, to do a Zoom meeting down here, so if I had it, I don't have it, so.
I don't know how that works.
You don't have a laptop?
Yeah, no, we, I don't have, the village does not have a laptop.
The DPW doesn't?
Sure, we, they have theirs for the song, but I can't. We can talk about that, look into this.
Yes, yes, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I know, when we talked about, or when it was discussed before, they even said about borrowing the DPWs for the evening meeting. That's what was mentioned, so.
And we did have a master plan meeting about a month, month and a half ago, and we did our final review. Arthur Mueller was going to insert some additional diagrams and stuff like that, and then he was going to send that back to the committee for one more review. We haven't seen that, the final final, yet, but that should be coming shortly.
Okay, well, thank you.
Is there any subcommittees about a rail of the park? Or if that's ever gonna change, or I know there's been different ideas with that over the years? Is there any master plan to that?
For the park? The council now is the park committee.
Okay, so if we brought a proposal to you, some changes, would, how would we do that?
I think you could bring it to Sherry, work through Sherry, and then Sherry can bring it to you.
It's on the agenda. You'd come straight to us, or the committee in here?
Straight to you.
If you're asking if we have a master plan for the parks, we do.
As far as adding some different things to it?
Sure, you can bring them to me as a proposal, and I'll bring them to council.
Just a question, Sherry, there's a beautiful ten-point that comes in my backyard, I didn't know about this. Did it turn out like, "Oh, my gosh, we get one?" Or what?
Hurry up, we're going past.
You still can't shoot firearms in the village, I mean, there's another little wording for that, too.
Okay.
Unless you're defending yourself against that ten-point.
Is a crossbow considered a firearm?
Is a what, a bomb?
No.
No, you can't use a bow and arrow, you, no, no.
You can use your camera.
Eat them and water them and help them grow.
I thought he's eating my apples, I'm protecting my property, does that count?
They gotta eat too.
Where's your brother live?
What's that?
Where's your brother live?
Farmington Hills.
Farmington Hills.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Can we wait?
No, you can go ahead, I just needed to say that we're going to close the session.
Oh, that's, you didn't, it's not gonna be closed?
Not closing.
Okay, uh, we need a motion, go to closed session?
I'll make a motion, we're going to close session.
Any voters say aye?
Aye.
This is exciting, the second meeting.
Who did the second place here?